Well, good afternoon. Ooh, we got a new, boy, you can hear us now. We got a new microphone system, so we'll see how this works. Today is October 21st, 2024, 6 o'clock meeting, Rowan County Commissioners. We're grateful that you're here. Look forward to this evening. Be a little different evening. I'll explain in a minute. We're going to begin our meeting, as we typically do, with a couple of things. We're going to have a solemnizing prayer. For those of you who are new here, solemnizing prayer, that means it's for the Commissioners. It's not for you. We'll have our chaplain come up, Chaplain Taylor. We're grateful for his involvement here. And pray for wisdom as we seek to do things that are in the best interest of everyone in the county. We're also going to have a pledge after that. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we come to you this day and thank for the honor and privilege to be here tonight. On behalf of our county Commissioners, dear Lord, we thank for them and we thank you for the work they do, Lord. And we come to you and ask you to be with them and be of those who are sick and need our prayers, Lord. And we place them in your hands, dear Lord. We pray, Lord, that you will help us in this meeting night. Everything might be done to the proper manner, dear Lord. Thank for preparations to be made, Lord. God has blessed us tonight and bless them. Help them in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. Things seem a little loud from up here. Is it pretty loud out there? Yeah, pretty loud. You guys are never happy. Not loud enough, too loud. It is a little hot, so I don't, I suppose y'all can control that. All right, we'll just work on it. This is our first meeting with it. Tonight, we've got what most don't know the last time this has happened. We're not going to have a quorum tonight. Jim and I were here. Commissioner Klusman has been ill. She won't be here tonight. Of course, as you know, Mike has been deployed in the National Guard. And Commissioner Pierce let me know earlier today that he is sick, so we are not going to keep him here long. So we're going to do some technical things so that we can even have this meeting tonight, and then we'll move on. So let me, let me get started. We have on the agenda, I need to make a couple of changes. Number one, if you look at item 3A, special recognition, I'm just going to move that to the consent agenda as item AB. Item AB. And then-
Mr. Ivey is not here with us tonight, so that's-
Yes.
-we're not dishonoring him in any way.
Yeah, we're, we're just moving that to consent. We're going to some events that he'll be there, and we'll present this to him at another event. Also, we have provided for us an item, require multidirectional amplifier for the event center out at the Plaza. We're going to add that as item AC. So we're adding item AB and AC. And we have, I don't have anything else. Anyone have anything else? All right, if not, do we have a motion to approve the agendas?
I'm sorry, were we not going to move public comment?
Okay. Yeah. So do we have a motion to approve the agendas amended?
No move.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, then, I know a public comment is next, but, I'm sorry, thank you. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Move a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment is next, but this is what we're going to do so we can release Commissioner Pierce. On the regular agenda, and Jay, you're listening, help me through this, make sure we're doing the right thing. I'm going to make a motion that we table items A and B because we're not going to have a quorum here in a minute. But we are going to also make a motion, as part of that motion, that we, that we ask and allow those who are here to be part of items A and B, that they go ahead and give their presentation, although we will not be voting on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll stick around so we can vote to get this out of the way.
Yep. Well, these might be long.
I understand that. Been here, done that.
Okay. Well, then I withdraw. I withdraw, and we'll just, we'll just move on as regular? Craig?
Yeah.
All right. Well, then, we have a couple of folks signed up. Bobby Kim. This is for public comment. Welcome. Good to have you here.
Say what, Commissioner, due to circumstances, I'll just withdraw from speaking at that time.
Thank you very much. Alvin Merritt, next. Welcome. We're glad you're here.
I live at, on West Wizro, at Woodleaf.
Yes.
The dump was coming from the rock quarry. That corner is always full of gravel. Every now and then, I go out there and pick it up. Anything I can really do about that?
Absolutely. So it's the corner of Woodleaf and Enen?
Yes.
All right. We'll pass that along to the county manager. We'll make the calls and get it taken care of.
Can I have your name and number, too?
I've got it here. Oh, I don't have your number. And you don't need to call that out publicly. Why don't you come up here and put your phone number, and then we'll take care of it, okay? Is that all right? All right. Thanks for coming. All right, it'll be taken care of. I'll give that to you. And one last one, Connie. Welcome. Haven't seen, seen you since last meeting.
Okay. Y'all know that our Sheriff's Department has really made an effort to do, help things up in Bonham County and with the flooding. And I want to thank the Board of Commissioners because you have not quibbled about giving them the funding that they need to carry out their job, which meant that they could much more easily take the time and the resources to go help. I also would like to urge everybody, please contact your congressional representatives, senators, and House of Representatives. They should either get off their butts and give FEMA and small business more money, or they should be forced to go and see what it's like so they'll understand the need. They don't understand because they don't bother going to look. Thank you.
All right, that's the last of public comment. I'll, I'll say quickly, out of respect for Commissioner Pierce, appreciate him staying. Jim Green and I went, was it last week or week before?
Last week, on Tuesday.
On Tuesday, up to Avery County with the sheriff. We rode up with the sheriff and spent the day with a group of Rowan County sheriff deputies. His SWAT team was up there. And I think Jim and I agree, it's probably the best day spent since we've been Commissioners since 2014. Seeing what our men are doing up there, was really impressed, the heart that they have. And everyone that we spoke with out in the field, out on the streets, when we said, they said, can we help you? And we said, no, we're just here from Rowan County with the sheriff. Their eyes lit up and said, Rowan County, man, you guys have been so much help. So we appreciate the invitation from Travis, and it was, we, we are just grateful for the folks that spent time up there to help those people in need, and it's not going unnoticed by those folks. So sheriff, hats off to you and hats off to your, your folks. Hardworking folks with a big heart. We really appreciate it. All right, let's move on, then. The first item will be SNI 02-24 and 08-24, Sunwest Business Park. Good evening. I'll try to be brief. Commissioner Pierce didn't do too well, and I'm about 75% myself. Get started here. All right, so this is the legislative hearing for actually three items, two of which got a rezoning, a watershed allocation, and a planned development subdivision. All this will take place on the Wiggins family property at 152 and Wilkinson Road. Sunwest Construction LLC, Bob Lyons, the owner of that development corporation, they're proposing a 33-lot business park at this property here, comprised of three lots, you can see identified at the bottom of the screen there. So to get you oriented, this site is outlined in blue here. It's 107 acres, eight tenths of a mile from the Ardell County line, and two miles away from the town of Boarsville. And zooming in from aerial imagery from about two years ago, you see the three lots, there's two houses on the two small lots, and then one more on the larger piece in the upper left-hand corner. Like you see Wilkinson Road, right to the left. This is not part of the development. That's a separate lot. These two are part of the rezoning request. So I'll, I'll defer to the developer and his team to go into more detail. I'll just provide a real quick overview. So the request would be to rezone from RA to CBIC, the conditional district, for a 33-lot business park. It would be subdivided into those individual lots. Roads would be built to state standards, meet all the subdivision ordinance criteria. And also, we'll talk a little bit later about the watershed component, but the board typically sees individual site plan requests, but this would not be 33 subsequent SNI requests. It would be one big lump sum request for all those lots. We'll talk about that shortly, but there's a lot of information in the report. I'm going to just leave out, that's the Cliff Notes version of at least the plans middle here. I mentioned those individual site plans. Right now, they're only more or less a prototype, a little placeholder, which is in your packet. You'll see a series of stormwater ponds, and you've got drainage features extending through the site, road networks, and then each individual lot would have a building, parking lot, and more or less what they could accommodate on that parcel relative to these soil types and the perk tests that came back, individual wells, and then just their view of the market, what that lot could support as well. So this would be the SNI component. Each lot would be under 70% total. Going back to the zoning map, all the yellow you see is RA, which is the subject property zone. You do see the purple and red areas for the business parks, the Moore'sel Motorsports Drag Strip, and other surrounding CBI industrial property. Since '98, there's been five rezonings in this immediate area, identified here, all to industrial, CBI, and neighborhood business. We do a very basic comparison of the current zoning district, RA, and the proposed district. Anything you see in the RA component would be very small home occupation, nothing of any significance. But each one of these type of uses that are proposed in here, for the most part, at least 75% of the time, that would also be allowed as a home occupation if they lived on the property, but just much smaller. Let me point out, too, on page four and five of the staff report, there's a few changes that staff proposed. We worked with the developer, and he could attest, I believe he's in agreement with all those changes we recommended. Most of that, I believe, in my opinion, is just due to the nomenclature of our ordinance and how it's pared down. I don't believe there was any intention of having some of those more agriculture-related type uses proposed, and then the others would not be permitted anyway. So with that in mind, that covers the majority of the recommended changes, but we do recommend a couple be added to it on page five. From a land use plan perspective, about half the site is within this existing map, commercial industrial area in purple. The highway business element is the fact that we're bordering 152. Keep that in mind when the plan encourages consideration of building experience, design elements, landscaping. You'll see that, and I'll let the developer touch on that, but he does have some proposed conditions and covenants that he would like to introduce on those 33 lots as well. And lastly, on the bottom, the natural environment, they actually have a 100-foot stream坝 proposed instead of the 50-foot recommended by the plan. Also, the project does have, not a TIA, but it's very similar to it. It's the Transportation Technical Memorandum by Kimley Horn that looked at the turn movements on 152 Wilkinson Road and evaluated the project and what it would introduce in terms of new traffic and turn movements in the area. So at the very top, we have about 11,000 trips on 152, design capacity of 151, and a future three-lane unfunded cross-section. And with that, they're more or less would be building a three-lane section with a required left and right turn off 152 into the development. And they also have, jump down to this slide, that's the upper part. The lower part, they're going to widen the turn radius on Wilkinson Road to 152 to accommodate the truck turn movements that should be illustrated here. So anytime there's a TIA or something similar, they evaluate the turn movements, make recommendations, and that was what was proposed, the left and right turn, and the improvements on Wilkinson. DOT accepted that. That would be expected at the subdivision stage. It would be a condition of flat approval if this were approved by the board. Going to the watershed part, back to it. We see lots of these. The county's approved 95 parcels that were removed in Cottle Creek since '94. At the moment, we have 172 acres that's been removed of our total allowance, 10% of the watershed. So that represents 1.4% that's been removed thus far. So in the map, you see to the right, the areas outlined in yellow, remember earlier, I mentioned 107 acres. The area in yellow represents common open space, and that they're not going to develop, and that's a little over 41 acres. So rather than really needing the whole 107, the, just the lot acreage and the road right-of-way total 61.4 acres. And being that there's still, I don't know if the boundary survey's been complete at the moment, but you have a lot of unknowns that could change this figure somewhat. So staff would encourage the board to consider 61.4 and then a 10% overage to account for maybe some fluctuation in the final acreage of the lot, the survey, and then that would represent 67.5 acres. And I think that meets their needs as well. I'll go through these really quick, so there's a lot of recommendations from the SNA part that the county adopted a couple of years ago. And I think, one, being that we don't want to hear 33 subsequent requests or even amendments, that we need to consider what we could adopt as a condition of a minimum building size and features where you could rely on either staff or, well, it'd be the subsequent buyers to as a condition that if they buy a lot, that you're going to have to build a certain type of building, not have prefab structures, lean-tos, carports that go to this figure, or have large gravel lots with those buildings. So we'll touch on those a little bit later. The facade standard and any open storage junk motor vehicles, there's language in the proposed covenants. I'm not sure if we want to get too involved in that as part of our conditional district, but that could be up to the board if they feel necessary. Kind of jumping around quickly here, but just a little sneak preview in the land use plan exercise that the county's undertaking right now. The survey results had responses here from the general public. We had over 500 responses in our plan, and here's some areas that the public are interested in seeing with new projects that come in, that have some design standards and landscaping, lighting standards, et cetera. I think that could also be used in conjunction with the other two items mentioned for consideration. I'll spare you this, there's, there's a lot of technical figures in the report on calculations of existing areas in the watershed that might be public need versus zoned areas, but with the short version of all that, if we analyze what we currently have as zoned and our needs that are known publicly, with this allocation, we're at 2.25% of our 10%. That's the figure you see right here. So we have 927 acres and then 2.25 left.
You mean 2.25 used.
Excuse me, 2.25 used, yes, sir. My apologies. One thing I should probably have mentioned early on, too, keep in mind that you have 12% by right. This is 70% coverage that we're allocating each. Statutorily, we can exercise the right if we want to allow stormwater, where a developer can build a stormwater pond in the watershed to balance. That only gives you 30% built upon area. Not a whole lot more than, than the 12, but at some point, that's our next option. That or density averages, where you buy rights to farmland somewhere else in the watershed and work in conjunction with that developed lot. That's still only balanced at 12%. So while there is another option, that also means, does the county want to get into maintaining For this slide here, it's just to show that when we look at each one of these, we identify existing lots that have not been allocated and have that cumulative total to add to our percentage. And again, it would be at 2.25%. Okay, the upper part, I think we're, we're good with the SNI recommendations, the working ag land plan. Only a quarter of the acreage is considered prime, also on a busy highway. Top of the ag extension office, there's no concern they have with respect to the working ag plan from the review by the subdivision review committee. Well, let me, let me touch on the planned development subdivision. The only feature that that includes right now, the front setback certificate. The proposal would be with this PDS request, that they could drop all the setbacks front to 30. And really, they're all internal anyway. There would be no external 50-foot setbacks that we're giving up. They have one corner lot that would be 30 either way, and then the rest will be bordered by a common open space. But for what it's worth, that application allows the developer to ask for and the board to approve a modified setback, front setback from the road back to front building. They're all internal, so this would be 30-foot request instead of 50. The subdivision review committee eliminated one of the, down here, pavement schedule. There was a ore, 10-inch of ABC stone, or the five inches of base course, so that, that is to be eliminated. The developer is not opposed to that. Also, I believe the same is true for two, but I'll let him address that. In the, there's three cul-de-sacs. One of them here between 17 and 18, you probably can't read this, but that's a 57-foot diameter pavement width. And the SRC recommended that we increase both the other two to that larger turn radius. It just allows any of the transfer trucks, large truck with trailer, fire truck, et cetera, to have a large turning radius in that bowl.
And that is big enough to get the fire trucks in?
Yes, sir. It'd be more than adequate. And I've already addressed three in the earlier comments with the reduction in uses. So tried to keep it brief, but it seemed like it went longer than it should have. But notice went out to joining landowners. We had one individual showed up at the planning board meeting. Not certain if they're here tonight, but they had a comment about the landscaping, which I believe the developer has been in discussion with them about that concern. So the planning board recommended unanimous approval, offered this statement of consistency here on page 14 also. Let me hit on a few of the conditions or considerations. So the use list on page four and five for the modified CD use list include the subdivision review committee recommendation and conditions on 13. So the SNI acreage not to exceed the lesser of either the total acreage for lots 1 through 33 plus the road right-of-way, or up to that 10% over. And that's to account for final design, engineering, boundary survey, unknowns, and that would be the total that we would be removing. This was referenced here. Previously had a community well lot, and it's not proposed now. So that's just striking through that part, but previously, this was a from the planning board condition.
It's going to be well or city?
Number four, each individual lot may not exceed 70% built upon. Number five, all lots develop with a fully enclosed building, having a square footage total in the greater of 7,500 square feet or 10% of the lot. One acre would be 4,300, but it would be 7,500 percent. You get somewhere around acre and probably three quarters, then it would be 10% from there. Is it, is a factor to consider. Definitely want to hear from the developer if he has any opposition to that. And number six, square footage of portable modular buildings and similar type structures without a permanent foundation cannot be used towards this total. Doesn't mean you can't have them, you just can't use that as your enclosed square footage. And number seven, if you buy more than one lot, the same factor, the number five applies to those collective lots. So there's three, or a motion to cover three items, the rezoning, the intensity allocation, and the planned development subdivision for the 30-foot front setback. Any questions? You just go back to page one of our recommendations, and we'll have you, there you go, we'll have you flip that at some point. All right. That was a lot. I'm glad you combined this, because I was losing track. Appreciate it. Any, any questions for Shane? All right. Don't go far. An applicant like to speak?
Jeremy Carter, I'm the attorney for the applicant. I'd like to bring first, for your consideration, engineer from Ken Burley Horn to address any concerns on the transportation plan.
Hey, how are you doing? My name is Thomas Shirley. I'm with the-
Yeah? Should be all right.
Better? Perfect. My name is Thomas Shirley. I worked on the, the traffic study with Kimley Horn, and so we- And so, we, through the, I guess, working with Shane at the county, as well as Kelly at NCDOT, performing a traffic study, we analyzed the accesses and recommended turn lanes at the access points. We had the site engineer analyze site distance at those locations as well. And in the end, we have turn lanes recommended at the access point, as well as a turn radius improvement at Wilkerson and 152.
Ask some questions just to confirm, there's a report with maybe managing engineers still in that. Are you also an engineer at the same time?
Correct. Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer.
And do you also participate in the creation of that report?
Yes, that's correct.
We'd like that to be submitted if it's a part of the action.
Yeah, just give that to our board clerk. Shane, of these road changes, are those part of the recommendations? Okay, all right.
If y'all have other questions, you're not, otherwise I'll ask you.
Yeah, that's fine, we're good.
Thank you. We also had issues with people getting here tonight as well, so I'm keeping my distance for everybody.
Yeah.
Pardon me, can't hear me.
Very well.
If you could tell board how you're involved in...
My name's Paul Carter, I'm president of Lake Engineering, and we did the industry design, but it is broken.
Okay.
Yes, one of the things we tried to include here was some extra public safety for the watershed areas, including some stormwater ponds where they're not normally needed for this type of development. Did that just to be sure that no individual owner would have, you know, anything up there he's not supposed to have and it's not getting cleaned out of the typically of stormwater.
Yeah.
With regard to the area that is common area, is that where all the stormwater is?
Yes, all those ponds are all in the common open space that the property owners group will control. And there's these access...
The property owners?
Yes.
Will jointly control it?
Will jointly control that. Just like a normal subdivision, like an HOA in a subdivision.
Okay, all right.
So, there's their protection amongst everybody that's got to take care of.
Yeah, not the people coming for us tonight, but the folks that will own the property later.
So, the, all these buildings will be sold, not rented? Okay.
I'm not sure about that second part of that. Mr. Lyons, address that.
Okay.
The, to clarify, with regard to the lot layout, do you best understand that it is going to allow adequate watershed with those buildings at 7,500 or 10%?
Yes, we've been in extensive analysis on layouts on each lot, but we're very comfortable with that.
Thank you. You came up from Florida, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
What part?
So, my main home is in Seminole, which I had the storm went over our house. The second, first one, we got water intrusion and stuff, but we're all good, thank God.
Good.
Not like what's been going on here. We should have been praying for everybody. Glad to be here, and I thank all y'all for coming this evening, especially Commissioner Pierce for being willing to say and help us out here. But, we've been working with Shane here for about a year and a half, and he's been excellent to work with, the staff here has been great. We've got a lot of direction of what the county would like to see in the citizens of the county, the study that he mentioned recently. We've tried to incorporate all those items into our design appearance. We have a homeowners association document that's in draft stage that Jeremy has for us, and we've been working on that for a good while, trying to incorporate all of those items into this design. And so, we're going to have a homeowners assoc-, not home, but it's a commercial, property owners association, and we're going to require everyone to be a part of that. There'll be a monthly maintenance fee. We're going to mow them all with the one company. We're going to require a specific amount of landscaping money be spent on each one of them and maintain properly through that document. We're going to require the signage to all be uniform, and be the same color, same style, same type, it goes nice and neat and clean. Lighting on the buildings are going to be uniform and the same. And then 70% of the front of the building will be required to be of some masonry type brick, stone, sandstone, something other than a metal front of the building. You had asked before about ownership, and my intention is to sell a good portion of them, but to retain a number for our family going forward for passive income, for relief and time. Can't think of a...
The question, one of the questions I have is payment and a lot of conditions that the staff is recommending.
Yes.
As a developer, are you wanting to present all those conditions?
Absolutely. We appreciate his help and his suggestions.
They're very good. Can I, how did you, from Seminole, how did you end up here in Rowan County, North Carolina?
So, my son moved up here, Robbie, almost 10 years ago, 2014.
Good.
And so, we've been involved in the racing industry. Robbie ran in NASCAR for almost five years, and we own a commercial building across the street that's a race shop we bought from Larry McReynolds. And we have an interest in a team that's working out of there, and I've been developing for 35 years in Florida. We've owned a construction company there for 40. And so, we, it's kind of a natural progression for us. Robbie worked for me in the field as a superintendent before he got up here and got us having fun in racing. So, now, it's time for him to transition business-wise, and I love the area, the people here are so friendly, and the weather's great. At home today, it's like 86, and we've been loving, loving that. And so, he came out of our business across the street and noticed this was for sale. I had told him we'd like to do something up here, and so, we started that process, I think it's been a year and seven months ago.
Well, good, well, welcome, and that is a great area to do what you're about to do, and we're glad to see some uniformity in that.
Thank you.
Think it'll turn out to be a great addition to our community. So, thanks for investing here, and we're glad you came up here, however you got here. Yeah, so, we're grateful, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, pleasure meeting.
And you expect that most of these units that you're being sold now?
Yes, sir.
At their size, most of them are going to be related to drag strip or racing?
So, we have, I think, 12 very interested parties that are somehow related to racing. They have manufacturing companies that are on the park, people that want to sell, that sell body parts at Xfinity and that kind of stuff, so they'll warehouse those things. We make sure everybody understands they can't have open pole barns, we're going to have nice asphalt, it's going to be as upscale as I can, you know, make it be, so that we're, we retain our values, and it's the kind of place that we want to be. So, yeah, I think the majority, one person is involved in racing, but he and his father own a company in Georgia, they're going to move their whole company up here. Another person's got two businesses, they're going to incorporate into one building.
Are the buildings all the same size?
They're not the same size, I'm sure they...
What's the range of size?
Height, you know, most of the people would like 10 to 12,000.
Yeah. Well, you avoid your sprinklers at 12,000.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Isn't that amazing? 11,990 square feet.
You got it.
Got you. Well, again, thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to seeing them done, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner, for being willing to say.
Okay. Any other questions for these guys? Shane, is this a public hearing? We need to open each of them? Just one? All right, so, we'll open the floor. We're going to have a pub, public hearing for ZO8-24 and also for SNIA O2-24. Anyone like to speak? Yes, sir. Yeah, you'll have to come up, yes, sir.
I'm from Cleveland, Ohio. I'm a retired firefighter. I'm from Cleveland, Ohio, I'm a retired firefighter. I'm also a semi-truck driver. And I moved down to the south. The one problem I had as far as deliveries was trying to find an address. That'd be my first question. Are you going to have addresses, you know, B, A, D, this is where we know, I'm from Firefighter Center as well. And two, as a truck driver, we're allowed to drive 11 hours a day. If you get a driver who's got 10 hours and 58 minutes, are you going to have a place where they can park? If there's no truck stops near what you're talking about. Those would be my two questions.
Well, we'll see if there's any other, any other comments? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and if you'd like to address that, that'd be great. I think the, two questions. One was addresses, which is going to be required.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, the addresses are now required by our 911 system, so that part, I think, will be fairly straightforward. The truck driving requirements, I know the turn radiuses could help truck drivers. Beyond that, I would refer to Mr. Lyons, I don't know that there's necessarily planned parking for trucks beyond the ones that might be there at delivery dock.
I agree, that's the case. We hadn't anticipated allowing anyone, is not doing business there to park overnight. I get it.
All right. All right, we have had presentation by staff, also had the applicant speak, had a public comment, questions. So, at this point, I'll make a motion that we approve Z, well, let's see, we need some conditions. So, I'll make a motion, Shane, will you come up unless he's driving, unless he's driving the computer? Make a motion, we approve ZO8-24 with the following, following conditions. Well, yeah, let's do this first. We will need, go a couple pages. Yeah, let's do this first, yeah. So, I'll make a motion on that we adopt this statement of reasonableness and consistency. ZO8-24 and SNIA O2-24 and PDS O1-24 consistent with the West Land Use Plan Area 3, and they're reasonable and appropriate based on the following. One, the property is located in the Highway 152 corridor overlay. Two, there are similar industrial parks in the surrounding area. Is there any more? Is that it? Okay. I'll make that a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I would make a motion, we approve ZO8-24 with the following conditions, that we would use, we revise the use list as noted on pages four and five. Two, we would include the SRC conditions that are on page 13. Three, the SNIA acreage may not exceed the lesser of the collective lot and the road right-of-way acres on the recorded final plat, or 67.54 acres, whichever's left. Four, built upon area on each individual lot may not exceed 70%. Five, all lots must be developed with fully enclosed building having a square footage totaling greater than 7,500 square feet or 10% of the lot size, which may not be reduced administratively by section 21-33, 2F, 2F. Six, square footage of portable modular buildings and similar type structures without a permanent foundation may not be used as part of the required square footage from condition number five. And seven, any future combination of lots must be developed with the same required minimum square footage total for the collective number of combined lots, and I'll change my motion to include SNIA O2-24 and PDS O1-24. So, I make that a formal motion.
Second.
Second, second. Any further discussion?
The building size is, excuse me, not the building size, we have addressed the building size, but... We were, didn't, didn't you say in your contracts that there was going to be a particular material that would be used with that? Did we coordinate with that, or is that picked up?
Shane, how is that addressed? One of those attachments that you have, if you want to diggy back on what Mr. Lyons is proposing, a 70, I think it's 70% masonry. You could add that to the front facade. Well, is, is there a list that they're agreeing to, that we would just add the entire list as a condition? In my opinion, I think it sounds good, but that'd be a lot for us to try to enforce, so... All right, so, our immediate issue is the facade being 70%? Keep in mind, too, when this becomes zoning, it's a lot more rigid, so if the covenant compliance folks, being the developer wishes to amend it for something unique, then Mr. County Attorney, would it be appropriate if we had a standard that said, unless otherwise exempted or amended by the covenant?
I mean, that would be, I mean, that's the cleanest one.
Because I'm just thinking about, I thought a corner lot, any kind of site that's unique, we deal with them all the time, with the manager and myself, looking at our own parks and different, you know, facade projections and different articulations. Depends on how involved Board will stay.
Well, my question was to help him have, have uniformity, not to create other issues for him.
How would we add that as a condition?
So, the property owners association will be filed with it. And in there, we're making that requirement, that it be minimum of 70.
Oh, yeah.
That's one of the requirements we have in this document. It's draft now, because I can't file it until we get it approved to build it. So, Jeremy understands that, but I don't...
Well, you folks are going to take care of it.
Yes, sir.
In the...
Just so you're aware.
Y'all could either say, as a number eight, that 70% have a front facade of masonry or stone or similar product, and be fairly straightforward with it, you just, you don't have it pre-printed on your plat. I will tell you, I would rather you not incorporate their entire homeowners association into the zoning.
No.
Shane and I would get to know each other really well, in not a positive way.
Oh, I don't believe that.
But, that's, that's fine with me. I, I, I don't want to create any more issues that they're going to be taken care of by the homeowners, the business association there.
We're fine with the seven?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, guys. Yeah, safe travels to all of you, thank you. Shane, SNIA O4-24. All right, this one will go much quicker. It is only a watershed allocation. Already zone industrial. Property owner is NMD Property LLC at 1180 Shen Farm Road. It is surrounded by purple areas, already zone industrial. And obviously, this does not include the allocation we've already provided for, but it was included in that total that we looked at earlier, other properties unallocated but zone industrial. So, we already have that in consideration. The primary thing that's a bit unique about this one is the allocation request is only for one and a third acre, which, you see the site area pointed here, but this is new allocation of 1.33 acres. The same owner owns 222 Pitt Road, and this lot has a tail extension going all the way to Shen Farm, and he owns 268, and it does the same thing.
and he owns 268, and it does the same thing. So those two sections, this has already been allocated for, will be added to this piece and be a two and a quarter acre lot. So keep that in mind as we look at the site plan. The revised lot two will include this whole section and all the frontage on Shin Farm. And the revised lot, this balance here, has already been accounted for in the allocation, and we'll look at that. This will be the property line separating those two existing buildings. So this site plan proposes three structures, and the owner is definitely 100% committed to building number one, 6,000-foot building. A future building number three by label 3,900, so 9,900 square feet, would be technically phase one. It also has a third future building back here, 9,600. That would be sometime in the future, along with a 4,000-foot expansion of building one. Reason I bring that up is when we approve these, there's a fallback provision, if you will, where, when do we have to bring something back to the board? Or when do they potentially lose that allocation if they don't honor what was approved on the board? So this would be 1.33 new acres or 9,900 square feet. And if you wanna look at it like this, the cherry on top would be they add another building or expand this. So those are all administrative functions if they come in and request permits later. So there's a lot going on with this site plan. I'll be glad to answer questions, but this would be an indoor remote control RV track facility, probably phase two. In the future, would go back to different use, light manufacturing, warehousing, et cetera. Building three is RV storage, and this is warehousing as well. All this area in the middle perks for the three structures. The green area is septic for the adjacent two lots. So this about, this is about the most maximum you could get from a allocation standpoint and use on those sites, so, you know.
Shane, where are they gonna get water?
Over 20,000 square feet.
Where are they gonna get water from?
They have a well they're gonna put here.
And that, so they've already got that laid off, and they know where the building's gonna go, and...
Yes, sir, they've had...
All these features. They can do, they can drill a well there?
They have an engineer, a good engineer involved, and they've, we've had several rounds, and they've had soil scientists, so this seems very doable. Yes, sir. There's a little close-up of it. While it's tied, all indications that this will work from all the parties involved. I mean, for decades, we've seen, we've seen a lot of plans that are questionable, but I think they have some good folks involved in helping them with it.
Good.
I'll spare you going through all these because in my opinion, they're all met from the report and the guidance there. We've received no phone calls for this. I think a lot of the folks are aware of this change, but this, and there's one other that was pulled off the planning board agenda by the developer. It's a little bit further down in Horsepower Park. At that point, there will be all the acreage allocated in the upper part of that industrial zone. So what we approved tonight, that's new, and then there's a few more remaining horse and motor. So the planning board recommended approval with these three statements. Statement of reasonableness and consistency here. No conditions of approval, so I'll leave this live. Any questions?
Thanks, Shane. Alright, we will open the floor for a public hearing for SNIA O2-04-24. Anyone like to speak on this? Alright, see none. We'll close the public hearing. I'll offer up a statement of reasonableness and consistency as a motion. SNIA O4-24 is consistent with the West Area Land Use Plan and reasonable and appropriate based on the following. One, the general recommendation for the maximum acreage of removal for a single parcel is two acres, and this request is less than the maximum at 1.33 acres. Two, this approval will increase the tax base and create jobs proportionate to the acreage requested for removal. And three, the site plan will utilize the acreage to the maximum as possible. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we have a motion then to approve SNIA O4-24.
So move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman cannot leave now.
Appreciate Commissioner Pierce. That saved a whole lot of folks a lot of time, so be praying for him. And Judy and Mike.
Yeah.
So this is our annual cumulative expenditures for through September. So we're up 6.9 million or 17.68% over September of last year. This is the annual cumulative revenues for September, and we are up 2.2% over last year or 2.88%. Property taxes are trending almost exactly the same as last year. Hard to see the purple on top of the blue right there, but we're up one point, I mean, we're up 151,000 or 0.22%.
Election or...
Right. Yes, sorry. For the property. And that's through August. Not used to having to drive and talk at the same time. And then sales tax, this is through June, and we finished the year slightly less than FY '23. So we were down 1.1 million or 2.56%. That, so the purple dot is 24. That was still above our budgeted amount, so we were still above our projected budget. And then for the month of June, it was up $398,000 or 11.6% over FY '23. So sales taxes definitely leveled off, and I know this chart for last year was funny because we had the correction, and then our whole harmless came down quite a bit. So, but I, I think it's, it's gonna flatten out.
Be interesting to see next month.
Right.
What it does.
What July was. Alright. Any questions?
Alright, red flags?
Not at this time.
Wasn't there some, what was the report that we got recently about reaffirming? Does that reaffirmed our bond status? What was that, Aaron?
Yeah, that was, we, we, we requested that they be relooked at and revised for our bonds we just sold.
Real in comparison to the other.
Alright, anything else? Strange meeting. Sorry about that. Alright, motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Lyons.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Alright, y'all have a good night.